Tonight, we're going to open up the policy subcommittee meeting. To review and there's a large list of policies that we're going to be reviewing in the agenda. And Tim Knight is here and I believe Leo Brown, you're up on Zoom, is that right?
Oh, here.
Okay. And just for the recording, I understand logistics. So I see the owl because the Zoom gets recorded. Also, that'll show Leo or show your screen. Yeah. You said you were going to try to bring it up there. Yeah. It's not. And I don't see anybody here. I don't think that's a comment.
No one but the. Five of us.
Yeah, it's weird. It only see the owl.
Well, you, you, you see me, right?
Oh, maybe.
You're listed as a panelist, I mean attendee, not a, not a, not a panelist. And then Jeff should be promoted as well.
Okay. And that is appropriate, right? There is nobody else here?
There's no one else in the. The list. If we pull up the participants button at the bottom, it shows five.
Listed as an attendee, not a panelist.
Alright, that's it. So there's five panelists and there's no one else logged into the Zoom.
Okay. Hello, Leo.
Good morning.
How you doing?
Wonderful. What about yourself?
Good thanks for joining us. And just one quick comment before we. Dive into the policies for section A. Leo, I had to step out a couple of minutes before 10, about 30 minutes, go to that room next door. And so yeah, you can carry that, it would be recorded and I'm not sure. And. Then that, I think we're going to start with section A, I think there was. The policy. Yeah. So policy A, we had someone that we revised a couple of years ago. But we still need to do additional revisions on them. So our attorneys went through them and gave us. Few additional sentences that we're missing from the last time. So I think. Jim, do you have those copies?
I do not.
Okay. So Andrew, these are the ones that I have, correct? So Jim, have you shared them or do you have them electronic? That might be. And if you get the email, then.
Yeah.
So on the first one, the non-discrimination policy AC. We've included in there. To include traits historically associated with race, including but not limited to hair texture, hair type, hair length, and protected hair status. Did you have that, Andrew?
Yes. That's the. Things generally referred to as the Crown case. It was the students in the Medford. Medford, Melrose, one of those towns. So it basically extended the definition of race to include. The language you just read.
So we have that in several places.
Any place your non-discrimination statement would like equal educational opportunity, it's going to be an equal employment opportunity, it's going to be, and anytime it says race. Add that extended sentence to it.
That's what it is.
Right. I'm waiting for the email.
There are too many.
On ACA, just one little typo where it said you've crossed out each principal.
Yeah.
So the committee has designated. And the director of students should be just the director, right?
Right.
So the and should come out as well.
And what are most places doing with actually naming the person? Our attorney said they have, we had to name the person and not the position.
Yeah, in anything that's Title IX, so it'd be non-discrimination basis of sex, sexual harassment. The grievance officer, the investigating officer. Needs to be by name, title. And how they can be located, how they can be contacted for things like. Like. Religion or like somebody's being discriminated based because of their religion or whatever, then that's a different. Different rule, so per se, but anything that Title IX touches, you have to identify the person's name. In some districts, like if you look at the next, the ACAB sexual harassment. If you have one sexual harassment officer for staff and one for students, you have to. Identify them out. If it's the same one, then you, you list it as the grievance officer for both staff and students.
The whole set of it? Oh, I thought you all had many copies.
Yeah, let's just do a whole set of those. Probably online, but.
What? They're on the pocket. They're online.
These are online.
Yeah, yeah, in the pocket, they share with you. They're online too. Jim, I just shared it with you.
That's it.
Alright. So far, I'm calling anything. And on that last comment, we have, is it the same individual? It is, yes.
Do you want to go print some more copies or?
Leo, you okay? These are in the.
Yep.
And Jim, you're gonna. We are Jim, this is our office.
Can you see it, Jim?
Yep. Just trying to pull it up. This is it. Here we go.
Just like the fall, we're going to start a little. It's two or three, we're gonna, we're gonna, that was the one thing.
Alright, so here's the AC file. On your screen, can you take the picture with the people and just kind of drag that off to the right? Yeah, just take the whole thing and drag it off to the right. There you go. Right, okay, so. As Jeff said, you know what? Oh, this is the old, this is the old file, sorry. I don't know if it's one of these. No, it's just, it's, I was trying to do a shortcut and it's not working.
It's not working?
Well, on my end, I, instead of downloading the file, I just tried, I opened it up in the screen. But, but the edits aren't coming down.
I think he's saying he has it.
I do have it.
You do?
Yeah, I just, I was trying to download it from the Google Drive to share the screen and it's not letting me do that, so I'm just gonna quickly download it. Now, let's try this. This should work. Wonderful. So these were the, these are the. Why did it do that? Alright, stop it. Okay. Don't touch anything. So these are the, the changes that are read that Jeff was talking about because of the court case. The, the, the definition of race has been expanded to. To, to, to include traits historically associated with race, including but not limited to hair texture, hair type, hair length, and protected hair, protective hairstyles. What our practice has been, and you can leave it the way you want. But we have been putting an asterisk next to race. And then bringing the asterisk down to the bottom of the page. And doing the, doing that explanation as to not elongate the non-discrimination statement. But it, it's all in there, so it, it's quite alright the way it is. So the, every place in this document of non-discrimination that it says race, that's been added to the statement. And then again, this is a Title IX issue. Compliance with policy AC, the district's non-discrimination and grievance procedure, or the district's Title IX sexual harassment policies and procedures is applicable. So you have to tie in both. The American with Disabilities Act, Individual, Individual Education, IDEA. And Title IX into the. One comprehensive document. And that's what. These changes have done. In the non-discrimination, the basis of sex, which is even though you've said it in the non-discrimination statement. Title IX requires a separate and distinct policy, you've always had this in your manual, but adding that the. Who the designated person is in that last paragraph. Is another requirement. And then you're referencing the. That's the Title IX Coordinator's responsibilities in file AC-R. Then with ACAB. And then you've identified where sexual, how sexual harassment is going to be identified and how it's going to be. How it's going to be addressed. Instead, yeah, I agree with the under federal law, that's got to be the important piece there. And then, or the appropriate civil rights officer if the complaint is under state law. So there's difference between sexual harassment federal and sexual harassment state. And that's. If it's a sexual harassment that doesn't fall under Title IX. Then it's state, if it falls under Title IX, then it's federal. This was file ACE, it's going to be recoded as ACR, which we talked about at the very beginning of the meet, very first meeting when we talked about this. Again, expanding the definition of race, which is appropriate. And then again, the differential language here, as if the allegation of harassment falls under Title IX, the Title IX policies and procedures for sexual harassment take over. That's federal versus state. See. And again, now we're differentiating, going back to state law for harassment rather than Title IX harassment. And again, the other qualifier about Title IX versus state. Language. Civil rights coordinator for Title VI, Title IX, 504, Title II. And Voice with America is, so you've identified who the civil rights coordinator is by name, so this is how you would have to do it in a sexual harassment. So it has to be name, title, and their contact information. You do not have to put email. You can, but you don't have to. So this is for. Employees, if any Medfield student, parent, or employee believes a good, alright, so you've. You've identified that this applies for students, parents, employees. So you do not have to, so by identifying Mary Brule as the. The person to handle that for all three categories. You've, you've covered your bases. Yeah, that's probably a global search replace, I'm going to do it at the very end. Because we've been, that's been, that's pretty consistent with everything we've been doing so far. I can't, this is a PDF, I can't edit it right now, but yes.
So far, everything is with that.
Yeah, it's fine. Yep, yep. So we are covered this previously, so you're taking it out of here. Any party may appeal a decision, yeah, five days is the, is the number, not 15. I think we talked about that too. So. May appeal within five, 15, 15 was an older standard. And it wasn't. Wasn't clear whether it was 15 school days or 15 calendar days. And if you said 15 school days and something happened on the last day of school in June. Then it wouldn't be until. The midway through September with that, that, that something could be appealed. So by making it five.
Makes sense.
It makes sense, yeah.
We have to just update this.
Yeah, it's just pulling it off the website, which I've already done on my draft. But this, going back, this is like one of our first meetings and we did this section, so. I think. Oh, yeah, the other question was, was the. Was there, I think the note on here is that if the strategic plan was going to be updated, if the mission statement was going to be updated, strategic plan. Okay, so now the new mission statement's on the website.
Yeah.
Perfect. I'm just going to copy and paste it right in here. And then as a cross-reference, you could say, you know, Medfield Public School Strategic Plan. Now, whether that's a hyperlink or not will depend if the strategic plans on the website. So we can pull it, pull the link from your website and add it to the policy. And that gets, that's get rid, get rid of this. And then we had ADA.
Is that on the list?
Yeah. As far as, you know, putting goal, goals and objectives in the policy manual is, is a little bit. Unrealistic in that. It's, I, I have a hard time believing that they, somebody's going to go in and, as the goals change from year to year, that someone's going to go in and update the policy. So, and I think historically, it's shown that that just doesn't happen.
Yeah.
Okay. So while these are, you know, pretty broad. You've got very specific documents on your, on your website already, the Portrait of a Graduate. Or something along, along those lines that are very specific for annual, a strategic plan, which are very specific for annual objectives. So I think in this particular one, we're better off referencing. The strategic plan and going from there.
Sure, and if that, we, we need to make that change.
That's what I'll do. The, a lot, a lot of like this policy and the mission statement policy, we're waiting on the completion of. The strategic plan, which. You know, we started this in 2000, so.
The strategic plan is very. Interactive, we also have a. Yeah, we have a software that makes the inbox, so you can turn the page. Yeah, it's wonderful. It's very easy to work with.
Does it, does, can you, does it link to other? Are there like hyperlinks within it?
No.
Okay. And then the. Then wellness. There were some updates that were, that were requested through this. And it looks like under nutrition, education, and wellness promotion. Okay. So these were the changes that weren't captured in the copy I had. Okay, yeah. Okay, alright. Perfect. Massachusetts competitive, who's nutrition standard is, you're referencing all the right things. Well, it's like, I think what Tim's saying is that if somebody wanted to like download it. Downloading it from the book.
Yeah.
Is that possible? Or printing it from the book, is that possible from the website? Yeah. Or, you know, it's like you can read it here or download it, here's a link and it's just all PDF.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of what I was, I was also thinking.
Yeah.
When it's in the policy manual.
Right. Well, I mean, the URL would be to, to the book too.
Yeah.
I mean, that's got a URL address on your website as well, so. It's easy enough to pull things like that, you just right-click on it, get the link.
Yeah. It's more a matter of other format, if people. So it's not.
I think it's more from a printing standpoint, printing from PDF is a lot easier than trying to print from an HTML, print from an HTML document. I just blinked. Alright, so the. And the implementation, you're referencing the Medical Emergency Response Plan, is that the correct title? It's page three of the policy. ADF. Just want to make sure if we want to put titles of documents in there, it's the correct title. Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Alright, that's A. Tim, Leo, any questions?
Not so far.
Yeah, not so far.
Okay. Oh, councils, okay. That'd be an easier way to do it. Okay. So these were the site, the school site-based council policies that we put aside for the. Mostly the principals to take a look at and make sure that. We were following practice. And in the first page. Instead of saying, it consisted with the other language changes, we were making changing from system to district, so district-wide goals rather than system-wide goals. Then, this might be hard to read because of the color, but. There were two versions of this here. I think the only real difference in them was that. The updated like parent guardian and stuff like that were already included in the first version where they were in the second one, so. But this is pretty, pretty straightforward. We say annually, simply because it's up to the district to decide when. When does the school committee want school improvement plans presented to them? In some cases, it's done in May or June. After, a lot of committees get frustrated with that because here's identified needs coming from the schools and your budget's already done. Some districts have switched to the fall. And it's like the kickoff of budget discussions, like here's the school improvement plans. And they're talking about starting, here are the needs that we, we're talking about starting in the next budget cycle, so say. Last fall, you would have had school improvement plans presenting, these are the biggest needs for FY25. Which starts in July. So you would, you could have kicked off your budget season for that, but that's why it's worded as annually, because the committee can determine, working with the principals, when's the best time. For school improvement plan presentations, but it, it forced, it forces the school councils to think a year ahead. If you do that, if you change it to the fall, they have to be thinking not next year, but the year after. So.
I think annually is appropriate, like that flexibility, I actually like the fact that you're bringing it up, because we're continuing to get a little, I think. A little more structure around like annual planning.
Yep.
And we are starting to bring site council in to the meetings, training program in twice a year with the principals. You know, it's not, and we can talk about this in the school committee meeting, but I like the idea. Typically, when the principals are coming, it's a little more about the opening of schools. And we have asked them, you know, give us the highlights in that part. the opening of schools, and we, we have asked them, you know, give us the highlights in that part, but it may not be a bad idea when you think about leaving your budget in the cycle. You know, look, this is the, and we wanna also, when you're serving on that, you know. No, you, you, there, there is a little more of an outcome. But so to your point, Jim, I'm thinking about it because that's typically on their attendance, and I totally remember looking at budget stuff, right?
Right.
For the school councils, so are they doing that independently? They have been in some of the site councils, like, Robert walks through, hey, this is what it looks like.
Yeah.
But that's always in the fall, so that.
Right.
It would still be enough time for that fiscal year, for that next fiscal year, if they did it in the fall, because that's,
Right.
The feedback I have on the July first date, that's,
Right.
is the principal said, well, it'd be great if it was September first, or, you know.
Exactly. Right, and that would, but that would be when, you know, the, the public part presentations would occur in the fall then, if it's September first.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, so it's.
Do their presentation at the August meeting, right?
Yeah. Yeah. Rather than June, or when they, whenever they do it now, May or June.
Yeah, I think the consensus was the fall, uh, but.
The only challenge is, is the election cycle of the school council members, when does that occur? If, if you just gotta change over in September, if you have elections, yeah, it's like, so, if you can just, if you can make that work.
Yeah.
I think if you, when you step, particularly if you start moving towards a year-long agenda and fitting things in. Yeah.
And then the other question I had on, on this one, for the last paragraph, you said school, uh, school plan is not reviewed by.
Which one are you? Which one are you on? Oh, just plain jazzy?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's actually, yeah, that's not correct. The law changed in that, uh, if it's not reviewed, uh, or approved by the superintendent within thirty days, it's deemed to improve, so there's a change there. But you, the, the language is typical that it's submitted to the superintendent for approval and presented to the school committee for information purposes.
Then the E, E two was the one that had it black first.
Right.
Right, right.
So that's where, that's where we would talk, we would say, uh, September first.
Or is it? Oh, there is July ones.
Yeah, the first sentence of, uh, E two. It's in, this is where the last paragraph's right.
Correct.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to play that out, because I don't think we consider the election piece when we're doing this, when we're having a conversation.
Well, I mean, you're talking about the development of the plan, so the, the school council that develops the plan, that's the plan that would be presented in September, even though some of them may not be on the school council anymore, but the next school council is gonna be working on the next plan.
Right.
Not the one that's being presented.
It's still the one they would have done in the spring and summer, that.
Exactly.
Okay. More make the operating model, it's, it's like, bringing a little more focus to that.
Well, for one year, they're gonna have to think forecast out a little bit.
Right.
And then, once they get past that first-year hurdle, now they're on a regular annual cycle. But school councils are smart, they can adapt.
They sure can.
Right. Anybody have anything else on, uh, these policies?
So, on that, are we landing on keeping it as, the, the way the policy is keeping it as July?
Uh, for submitted to the superintendent, I think the consensus was to go to September first, am I not correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, when they, in, just review, you know, reviewed with the school committee annually, that could be, you know, September, October, November, you decide where it best fits into your calendar.
Yeah, and we're, I think we're gonna be, be the best.
Yeah, right. Okay. Hearing no further questions? Okay. What's this? And then we have one policy in section, I'm. Yeah, put this. And it's early graduation. I think if I remember correctly, when we talked about this policy, we weren't quite sure whether this still happens or not.
Right. Um, response I got from high school, the guy that sort of, no, it doesn't happen. Do you find many districts with this policy still in place? It's not MASC, it's a Medfield.
Right, some, some do, but those are typically, um, schools that are in the same community as a community college.
Right.
But even with that, um, like, we, I had this really long conversation with Barnstable last week on this topic. And, um, the dilemma was that if the way they're, they changed how they scheduled classes, so they went to, instead of five blocks, it went to seven blocks, so students could technically get enough credits, that, the, the number of credits they needed to graduate by the end of their junior year, because eighth grade's at the high school, and they could actually get two credits in eighth grade that would apply to graduation, so that would, the only other requirement they would have would be, you have to have four years of English, including one year in your senior year, so they could come, take their English class and then dual enrollment out uh, to the community college, and then they, they had a long conversation with people at the community college and found that the students who were at the community college weren't, they were only taking one class. They weren't, so the students weren't in a full-day program. Um, they've since changed their graduation requirements, so that's not, you know, starting with the class of twenty twenty-six, that's not gonna, not gonna be able to earn enough credits as a junior to, to qualify for graduation. But, um, with time and learning requirements about the nine hundred ninety instructional hours, uh, and then the current attendance regulations, uh, I don't know how you could, unless you're taking attendance from wherever they're doing early graduation from, um, you still need the X number of days as a senior.
Right.
You know? So I, you know, back maybe before time and learning and before attendance regulations were in, you could do this, but I just don't see, I just don't see how you can, given the current requirements. I mean, other than, other than a student advancing because they're just, you know, so brilliant that they're, you know, they can apply to college. But, you know, maybe that's a dual enrollment question more than a early graduation question, but.
We have a partnership with Regis College and we had, we're offering classes for the second year now, we get a grant from Desi on that.
Yeah.
I don't know how that would impact this, but none of.
But that's dual enrollment, right? It's not, it's not early graduation. Yeah, that's, that's just earning college credits in lieu of high school classes, I could take college classes, that's, that's different than this.
There. No, except for. I think Jim's point is this.
Well, particularly where you have to notify them. When you, it's a high school, unless they're doing any MASC. Must, could, shall consult with the high school guides person on what to develop a graduation plan. So, it, it's kinda like you have to decide to do this in ninth or tenth grade, I would think. I don't know.
I think, like, one of our principles has been things that are working, but it, it's a net, but it's not working.
Right, but, but, yeah, we don't, we don't have, uh, early graduation policy, and I, it's, it's not something that we've come across, or.
Right, and, and as I'm saying, and I, when I'm saying that, I'm referring to our, the overarching policy.
Right.
Like, we can nit, nit anyone, so, you know, like, we'll never. You might even bark and tire.
That's coming soon.
Keep saying, I keep threatening. Not even close. Would you recommend moving out, or?
Um, if it's, if it's not applicable, there's no sense having it. If it's also not hurting anything.
Yeah.
Other than the gender stuff that's in here, but.
I would lean towards, it's, it's leaving it, um, just, um, and, and using that same, if somebody is gonna come up and say, Leo, unless you have, have your opinion.
Uh, not really, I, I just follow the guidance of what Jeff's, you know, is recommending on this.
Well, this also, it does talk about, it's more geared towards the second second semester. So if they have enough credits to graduate to completion of the first semester, enroll in an accredited college, a junior college, they could get their diploma at the end of the first semester, but. I don't know.
How often does this happen, Jeffs?
No, I was just saying, Leo, it hasn't come up at all, so.
What are you recommending, Jim, to leave it?
Uh, I, I'm just saying, if, if, if it's not, if no one's taking advantage of it, but at the same token, is there somebody out there who might? You know, you don't wanna.
Yeah.
Yeah, like Mike.
I would, I wouldn't wanna remove an option, you know?
No, I, I just, just update the, the, uh, pronoun stuff and leave it in there. It'd probably be more difficult to put it in than it is to leave it in.
Yes, there must be a reason.
Yeah. But, like I said, but the only, the only caveat I have is meeting the new standards for attendance and, uh, time and learning, so, um, that would, that would actually have, that would also have to be resolved.
And that would be implied, and.
Yeah.
If that, if they, if that's, and, and right now, Robert.
Right. Meaning, but, you know, early graduation means that they're out, so if they're, if they're out, then the attendance requirement's over.
Right.
So. Exactly, it's much different than dual enrollment, so that's why I wanna make sure we don't confuse those two topics. Dual enrollments, they're still enrolled in the Medfield Public Schools, but they're taking classes elsewhere. But they're still here. Graduation is that, you get a diploma, you're done, you're gone. Okay.
And how does it work with Regis as a college level program? Yeah, so it's, it's for, uh, high school kids that wanna be educators? Yeah, so we did a course last spring semester, I remember one this spring semester, but it's at, it's at ninety-two, it's not. Yeah, and, and they don't require, like, they're also, they say, they, the program is for high schools, so it's always in the Bible, they don't have, on, right? So you're saying we're stepping out in a minute, when I do, uh, Leo, just, if you can, should have covered. And, um, it's not because of the topic. There's some humor to this.
Right, back to, so now we're moving to J. Correct?
Yeah, yeah. Now, day is more like our standard.
Right.
We're up today, right, we're, so these are the ones that we had left all of these in.
Right.
And, yeah, just bear with me one second, I'm gonna put more operationally, I would think would make sense to bring A and B back, right, we're, I think we're gonna wanna start getting our school committee meetings, where we're doing first reading, second reading. Um, and I think it was, we, we stopped that for the right reasons, because we're like, let's do this, make sure whichever gets through here is. Um, so, so that would, um, you're gonna update more, more of the.
I'll be right back.
Pronoun and whatnot.
Yeah.
Um. Uh, how, how soon, do you think we need to send it, those?
A week, maybe.
Okay, so we'll probably have to go on to the meeting next week, and we'll probably have to hold on it, which is okay. And we do it in that, uh, February.
I'd say today, but I have to go back to the office and print all the stuff for the orientation tomorrow.
Yeah.
In Hop, Hopkinton. In the building used for them, I put Hopkinton, they sent it back to me. So we're not Hopkinton.
Okay, yeah, we can, we can at least start, um, it, it might be reintroducing that.
Okay. It's off. Okay. So, we left off at J I C F B, which is the bullying, retaliation, harassment policy, so the first one up on the screen is Medfield's current policy. Which I think is warning, investigating, let me see. The big push is making sure there's language in there about retaliation, and you have that in yours. Page five. Principal designee. Doesn't mean alternate person, yep. Notice the parents. Same with school district, notice the law enforcement, six, seven, I didn't see. Yeah, I think we need to stay with Medfields. As I said, the big thing that, that the audit's a focus on is retaliation language. Um, let me just pull one more thing. Yeah, it is, um, I didn't pick on it, but, um, is there cyber bullying language in here?
On first date.
Perfect, perfect, perfect. This actually looks like ours, I mean, it just simply been. Okay, I think just the title's different, that's the only difference, let me just. It was an update to the legal references, so I'm just gonna change that on yours.
Okay.
Uh, J I C G, tobacco used by students. So you have a tobacco use by students policy, and alcohol use by students policy, and we combine everything into one, and alcohol, tobacco and drug use by students prohibited. And. It does vape. It does vaping, like e-cigarettes, steroids, anything. Um, it talks about the the verbal ske- screening process um, that Desi is moving towards. So my suggestion would be uh. Drop the individual ones and go with the combined one.
That makes sense, Leo.
Leo? He answered, you were muted.
Yeah, the references to the models too are, have thirty-seven each and a half.
Right.
Three quarters, it's just thirty-seven each.
Right. Uh, and then you won't need the substance abuse possession, illegal sale by students, cuz that's covered.
Okay, that's all part of it.
Yeah. Uh, dangerous weapons in school. Within or on school property, including school buses. Something you may wanna add to there, including school buses and during school events. Even though it says, it says in on school property, but school events are sometimes off school property. Proms and so forth.
Does that legal reference get updated too?
No, it's still thirty-seven H for dangerous weapons. H and a half and H and three quarters expanded on H, but H is still the.
Is expelled line with H? But that was half and three quarter.
Um. No.
I guess it's H.
But it's it's big for weapons, it's H, yeah, for um. Assault or um, like assault of a staff member, it's it's H and a half, and then H and three quarters is more about. Tying into stuff outside of school into school conduct. J I C K harassment of students, so this is pretty much been um. Replaced by the comprehensive bullying retaliation harassment policy. When this was developed, um, most schools only had a sexual harassment policy. So, but we all, and and this was before bullying even. Um, so we knew that there were other types of harassment other than sexual, and there was nothing that covered that. So that's where this one was created, and now with the expansion of the bullying retaliation harassment. Policy, uh, which includes sexual harassment, that this has become redundant. Is all of those cover, whether it's student to student, staff to students, student to staff. This was, this was an attempt at the time to uh, address. Gaps. In particular, it was not necessarily student to student, but interactions between staff and students. Both ways.
Which is now covered.
Which is now covered under bullying and the the harassment uh, policy. Uh. J I E, the Medfield policy is illegal, you cannot require. This, it it, when continued attendance has the sanction of the respected mother's position, you cannot require doctor's notes to have pregnant students continue in school. That's Title IX violation. That's just probably something you don't do, but it's on the book, you have it on the books, so. The uh, the legal version is what's the next page here, it's just basically they have permitted to remain in. Classes throughout their pregnancy and as long as they want, which is basically it. And we've even taken it so far as to make it a affirmative statement that the district does not require. Uh, a certification of physician that the student is able to continue. J I H, interrogations and searches. Um, the only difference between what Medfield has and what we had was the uh, pronoun changes. I think there's a he she in here somewhere. I guess not. Unless I already changed it, which I could have done. Yep. Oh, I know where it is, it was in um. Up here, in the first paragraph, that there. It used to be he, she. But I already made a change. Uh, student complaints and grievances, um. This is not. Currently in the uh, Medfield policy manual, but um. Kind of a best practice policy. It's basically, you know, students and their parents or guardians, they believe this child's been. Treated unfairly, they have a process to follow, and. That process is outlined in the student discipline policy.
What's been our handbooks, just not.
Yeah, it's not in the policy manual, yeah. Uh, J J, co-curricular and extracurricular activities, uh, the only change we're recommending here is the. Parents guardians change, the rest of the documents fine. For now. Uh, J J dash E, um. This.
Make sure you have the race on this thing.
Um. Yeah, I need to do that, yeah, this is, this is just yours, is this. Okay, yeah, I gotta do, I'll do the um. Race definition. Okay. Uh, J J A. Student organizations, I'm gonna keep rolling unless I hear somebody object.
Yeah, that's okay, I'm just, I'm just reading as you're going through it, if I see anything jump out, uh, I'll I'll yell.
Okay, um. The, the di- the difference to the 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 template policy in this one is that in the first paragraph. Um. They don't typically use the word board. It's, you know, with the state statutes, school committee policies rather than board.
I just say policies.
Um, well, Massachusetts is only one of two states that use the term school committee.
Really?
Yeah, Rhode Island in here, but since Massachusetts is the first one to have public schools, everybody else is wrong. That's what I say to my national colleagues. Um, so then.
Follow directions.
In the middle of the paragraph, uh, middle of the page, um, it is, this this reference, yes, see also policy J I C F. Um, in format, you know, in in, to ensure that all the formatting's correct, um, we typically would put that down here. As a cross-reference. Um, that way, it gets hyperlinked, um. I'm not sure that if it's up here like this, it would get hyperlinked.
Oh, if we did it, we could, but if you.
Yeah.
Keep it, let's keep the test document standard to the others.
Matter of keeping everything looking uniform.
Right.
Uh, J J E, student fundraising activities, there's two versions of this, this is the Medfield one. And. This is the M A S C one, um, one of the major changes is um. The kind of a, well, it's right here, I'll read it to you. Um, this paragraph here. Um, it's like door-to-door sales are discouraged, you you know, having kids walk. Neighborhoods and knock on doors for fundraising activities, it's, you don't say, you don't wanna say it's. It's prohibited. I think discouraged is probably the best way of doing it, cuz I know, you know, like. In my community, the football team goes, but they go in groups of six, and there's usually one or two linemen with them. So they're probably pretty safe traveling as a pack, but um. I think just generally speaking, it's probably not a practice you wanna encourage.
Right.
Right.
Um, and it does. The other line in here is who's approving fundraising activities. Um, our language says that that any fundraising activities that involve students. In the fundraising process must be submitted to the superintendent for approval, some districts change that to the building principal. Or it could be superintendent or designate or. Yeah, if it, if it involves one building, it's a principal, if it involves more than one building, it's a superintendent. I don't know what your practice is here for this.
What do we do today?
Yeah, but then who knows, if if you say designate, a lot of times it's like, well, who is the designate? Yeah. Or you can say superintendent or building principal. That way it could be uh. I'll just do it this way. Okay. So this one's gonna go away. Uh, then J J E dash R is a fundraising procedure. That Medfield has. Um, last updated in nineteen ninety-one. And see, even that, even the door-to-door solicitations in this one from nineteen ninety-one is. Strongly discouraged, so it's being consistent. Um. My concern, yeah, my concern here is that this is something that was in nineteen ninety-one, it's thirty years later. Um. I don't know if if this still is in practice. And it's procedural. General recommendation is not necessarily having procedures in the policy manual.
That's supposed to be gifts to school libraries or?
Yeah, it's just gonna get scanned.
Oh, I see.
And then, of course, there's a library policy that talks about. Policy selection. I mean, uh, material selection and adoption and review.
Would the former policy take care of this?
You know, mind or? I think the fundraising policy.
Yes, I mean.
Takes care of it, yeah. And then a lot of it's gonna be, um, what type of fundraising is it? Um. And this is saying, uh, must be approved by the appropriate principal administrator, so that's consistent with. Who will seek approval from the superintendent, that may not. Happen. System-wide calendar. If a fundraiser is held for the purpose of replacing an idea removed from the budget by the school committee, the principal must ask school committee approval prior to the fundraiser. Fundraising policy guidelines will be distributed to all appropriate staff, police, support groups, we are reporting fundraising. Each support group must prepare an annual written report listing fundraising activities, amounts raised, distribution of such funds, or. Should be submitted to the appropriate principal. According to the assistant superintendent for submission to the school committee by July fifteenth. Yeah. Like you said, there's things in here that you're setting yourself up if if you're not following these procedures. Um, it, at the minimum, they should be, if you're gonna keep them, they should be updated to the current practice.
Leo, what do you think?
I was gonna say, yeah, let's update to the current practice, I mean, do we know what the practice is, though, I mean, do we? I mean, do we have that handy to be able to fill us out, or do we need to develop it, bring it back?
We'll update this stuff if you wanna keep it in here.
Okay. Uh, J J F, student activity agency accounts, policies and procedures.
Well governed by master law, right?
Yes. I'm just looking for, there's a couple of student activity purchase, I mean, that texted, I don't remember. Gifts, student organization, scholarship funds. Record keeping subsidiary accounts, receipts. Insufficient check procedures, earnings, interest, commissions, purchases. God, who wrote this? Just come from the town treasurer?
What's that?
I'm just wondering who wrote this, pretty detailed. Let me see. In that different period, three members, in which there is no receipts or disbursement required, and the house shall require the farm be closed, or an organization pay advisors. Classic accounts are established to benefit students currently in the school, once a class, so it's graduated, it's going to be one of the class conscious, or you know, six months after graduation. Okay. Um. If you're gonna keep all, all that stuff, I would suggest we change out the graduating class funds and the inactive student activities. Um. Inactive student activities language into yours, simply because of uh, more changes that came from the. The Department of uh, Revenue. Cuz one of the things it said that it's not in yours, is just that you you can't write, if a class graduates and is taking the money with them. The check must be written to the class, not to individual people. Um, and then they have to. Deposit it under someone's, either they get it.
So explain your M A S C, J D F. One, your M A S C J D F.
Yeah. Cause they're gonna have to create their own bank account for it. Can't keep it in the house account.
I I wouldn't. On this one, I know Michael did a lot of work on this because I know the business managers. Had a little push on.
Yeah.
Few years ago, so.
But it's more, I mean, the two, two things, I'm I'm most. The, I don't believe the, uh, it the class accounts at graduation. I think the language in ours is better. Um, and the inact, the inactive account language.
Okay.
Um. Cause it says disposition of assets shall be determined by the school committee. Um. And I think if you look at the way ours are written. Um. The superintendent makes a recommendation and that part's missing in yours.
Okay.
And that's what the the divisional labor, not divisional labor relations, Department of Revenue. Divisional local services, Department of Revenue. Um, and they can never go into deficit. So. If you want, I'll just merge the merge the graduating class language and inactive language into yours. And see how that goes.
Yeah.
Alright. I'm also gonna copy up the, uh, legal references. Oops. This is a supplement to the policy where you put. This is where you would have your school committee vote on what the limits are of the checking accounts. Um, as long as those amounts haven't changed without changing this policy, you're good to go.
I don't know. I wonder if. Is Michael in the room?
No, Michael's not here.
I would imagine they're starting to get a little larger nowadays. You know, when they're using student equity, uh, funds for things like transportation or whatever.
Yeah, and you know, of course, it's, there are different accounts, but there's like the high school will have multitude accounts. One for each class, one for each club or activity, athletics, that and, um. I can imagine at the high school, it gets really expensive when you start having to write checks for the junior and senior prom plus graduation.
Right.
You know, I I just wonder if that twenty thousand dollar.
Is enough.
Is enough when you, when, because it's if it's a maximum, then. Um, you can't like transfer money in and anticipation of those bills, you have to actually pay the bill to get the. Submit the paperwork to the treasurer and then they reimburse it. But if you are writing a bunch of these checks at the same time, that might be problematic. I know high schools tend to have more problem with this than any other school does.
Yeah, with any other to apply.
Simply because every give, every year you're running a junior prom and a senior, senior activities, graduation, whatever the case might be.
Yeah, I would just, uh, I I think we should increase it. I just don't know, you know, how high it needs to go. I mean. Uh, that's why I'd like Michael's, you know, input to see just how high it might.
I'm just gonna highlight the line for now, knowing that there's a conversation that has to happen about that dollar amount. The rest of it's fine. Pretty straightforward. Uh, contests for students, this is a Medfield-only policy. This is basically saying that, um, we'll cooperate with community organizations and agencies. So this might be. Like the, I don't know, the key club sometimes sponsored by Koanis might have a writing. Or an essay contest or something like that. And it's just basically saying the schools will cooperate with those groups to get the information to students.
Is this really a policy or is this just a statement?
Uh, it's it's more of a statement, but it's a, it's it's the fact that you've put it in your policy is, uh. Is something you can point to with community groups. Say, hey, look, this is, you know, we 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 try to work with community groups. As long as you do it. If you put it in there and you don't do it, then it's somebody can hold you to it. But if you're currently doing it, then there's there's nothing wrong with it. Basically saying somebody, somebody else could come in and do away with it. And it's like, no, no, we have a policy that says we do this. So it's kind of protecting. The practice, if you like it.
Yeah, I don't mind. I leave it in there.
Okay.
The language sounds fine, right?
Yep, no, it does. Uh, student late, that student, uh, travel, which is. In this particular policy is specifically talking about late night or overnight travel. Um, this would not count a field trip to the Museum of Science that happens during the day. This policy wouldn't apply to that. So, um, for that purpose, I would suggest at least changing the name. To what we use on ours, the student late night or overnight travel to make it clear that this is what it's applying to. Um, and it really, if if students are gonna be transported on a bus between the hours of midnight and five A M. There are certain procedures you have to follow. Um, this is. Um, as a result of that, I think it was Natick, the choir was going to Nova Scotia and. Uh, the bus overturned on a off-ramp. And that was at like two in the morning. Um, so. It's pretty clear that, um, by changing the title, you you're making it much more specific as to. Um, what you're referring to. Uh, the content of the policy is fine. Uh, my only suggestion is just changing the title.
Yeah.
Yours.
Sounds fine.
Need it or Newton, forget which one.
What's that?
You're forgetting just how big this section is. Then these are the regulations that go with that. Uh, policy that this is kind of one of those areas that, um. And I don't think they've, they haven't changed since two thousand four, so there's nothing to update, other than probably pronoun stuff. Um, but. Um. And again, it's, it goes with that policy. Um, what was the difference between the two? Oh, the legal references have changed because those old, these old older links in the other policy don't lo- no longer work. So I'm just gonna swap it out. The Department of Transportation has updated its links on things, so we had to replace all the links. Oh, and the other thing we had to do is add the background check policy as a cross-reference, so. Uh, see, intermural programs, interscholastic athletics. Um. The Medfield policy combines intermural, it it's interscholastic as topics. Um, we, that policy really doesn't cover intermurals, so. You can certainly stay with the Medfield one because it covers both categories and we only cover one. The one thing I would do is bring these cross-references up.
Yeah.
Um. The cross-references that are in J J I B, I would bring them up to the Medfield J J I A slash J J I B. Cause our policy doesn't cover intermurals, yours does. Doesn't it? Not every school district has intermurals that are run by the school. Uh, let's see, athletic policy for adding or dropping a sports program. Yeah, this is all you. I don't know that I've ever seen this policy before, to be honest with you, because it's usually a budget discussion. So I don't know whether this was put in place because you're, some, there was a process of adding a sports team or. Adding one, dropping another, or. But it goes back to nineteen.
Yeah, what do they do, Jim, in the sense of? Other school districts usually choose what sports go in.
And they usually audit the students and. Basically, what 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 athletic activities would you want to? If you had a choice, it's it's much like you do in a vocational school when you're trying to determine whether you need to swap out. Uh, one of the shop areas. Uh, you know, are kids playing it? Are they, are they taking the class? Are they not taking the class? If they're not gonna take the class, what else can we offer? Same thing, if you have a, the, uh, sports activity that's people aren't participating in. You know, it's like, well, do we just drop it or do we? You know, can we add something else or, but that's usually, you know, a a conversation with the director athletics. Uh, and this, and the administration, and it's usually happened in around either, uh. Discussions about a student athletic handbook or budget. Particularly if it's something that the, that the district is gonna be, um. Supporting.
Right, so, oh yeah, so the handbook could do just-in-time things.
The following conditions must be met before a sport becomes part of the interscholastic athletic program. It it must be conducted as a fee-based youth or intermural program activity for at least one full. School year prior to inclusion. But doesn't say what grades.
Uh, what are your thoughts, Jeff?
I was a history of this somewhere. I don't know. I have to wonder why it's even.
I mean, I don't wanna cut it and and tick anybody off. But if there's no real need for it and we don't use it. Um. Why don't we do some homework on that one, Jim? I'll swing back to it.
Maybe I want to ask your athletic director if he, if he or she even knows this exists.
Yeah.
Okay, um, next up is, uh, head injury concussion policy. Um. My recommendation here is to switch to the, um, the the second version of this. Um, there were changes made in the regulations in twenty seventeen, twenty nineteen. The new reg- regulation requires, and it actually it was updated in two thousand thirteen. Um, the new regulation requires that the, uh, policy be reaffirmed every two years. And some people make it a point that when they vote the handbook. And that it just dislike the part, uh, concussion policy language is in the handbook. They make it a point that when they approve changes to the handbook. They add a line and reaffirm the head concussion policy as part. So it's not like a whole separate thing you have to do.
Right.
But since it's in the handbook and as long as that handbook language matches what's in your policy manual, you're good to go.
I mean, I would just, this looks like it's fairly. You know, current, right?
Yeah, and the, the, the newer language talks about, um, second impact syndrome. That, um, wasn't really part of the original regulations and as. Like everything else, the more you look at something, the more information you get and the 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 better procedures get. So it's like, you know, best practice is continually being refined around this. As coaches and athletic trainers and athletic directors and nurses get. You know, more familiar with, uh, the, you know, the training and being able to recognize the symptoms of a concussion. You see it. In NFL games all the time now, where, you know, somebody up in the booth is radioing down, say, hey, hey, go check out. Number who, number seven on that team. Because of the hit and the way they got up and stood up and walked after they got up off the field, so.
Yep.
Our former athletic director did that, man, though.
So, um, you know, since this first came to be, in fact, um. Um. Uh, it was actually, uh, a school committee member at Diamond Regional, whose daughter was a basketball player and suffered. Concussion after concussion after concussion. It was, oh, you got your bell run, go back out there, you know, you're back out there. Um, to the point where now she's got, she's disabled because of the concussions was. Authors of the original legislation that was passed on this.
When did she play?
Huh?
What did she play?
Basketball. Basketball. This is a side note, you know, the what the cause of the most. Um, orthopedic injuries in people over the age of sixty. Pickleball. Uh, this is the, uh, protocol that the district adopted. Um. I, again, am going to suggest going with the second version of this. Um. But even with that, I would suggest that you review it with your, um, either. Whoever the the lead person is in your district on head injuries, whether it be the athletic director or. Um, head nurse or the nurse manager. They've, they've really kind of expanded what some of the symptoms are, what some of the signs are. That, you know, back in twenty thirteen, they just didn't know. And this is all from reports that have been submitted, uh, based on injuries and what the observations were. Um. From the trainers and athletic directors and coaches, what did they witness? What did they, what tipped them off that they were assigned? So that's where all this list came from. There's actually feedback from the field. And that altered the return to play language. Um, there's a, uh, line in here, um, a couple of times about the impact test, which. There's a, uh, line in here, um, a couple of times about the impact test, which. Was one of the methods used to create a baseline, it's in there for a placeholder, if you don't use impact, if you use something else. We would simply replace it with whatever the one is that you're use here in the district.
Okay, we do baseline testing, I'm sure it's impact.
Yeah. As you can see, this, you know, this is now ten pages long, that. And all of this is required. I should say twenty twenty-one, not eleven. Okay, we go with that?
Yep.
We only have fifty pages left in this section. Um.
It's still progress.
It is, absolutely. Next up is file J K, student discipline. We, uh, we just titled it student conduct, not student di- discipline. And, um, we don't, the difference between the two is we don't have the first line. But that doesn't mean it's wrong. Discipline is due responsibility of the home and school, but since you can't dictate policy to the home. That's one of the reasons we don't have it. But to be consistent with all the other policies in the manual, I do suggest you change this to student conduct rather than student discipline. It's up to you whether you want to keep the first line or not.
Eat it.
Huh?
First line?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean. That's more of a statement, right?
Yeah. Interup.
Uh, Tim?
I don't care.
I, I think, um.
It, it's easier to leave it than to try to, to take it out and put it back in.
Leave it.
All right. Uh, next up is corporal punishment, and this is required, that you have this statement. Even though it's a state law. Uh, next up is physical restraint policy, file J K A A, um. Just make sure here where we are. Fifty. So your policy has rolled in a few procedures as well. Amendments for, since staffed up training. Require training for all staff, I mean, it's got all the elements in it. You've got the prohibition, you've got, you know, no sec. The one thing I would suggest is, uh, on page one of five. Under the prohibition statement. On number three, so it's D B three. There are no medical contradictions as documented by a licensed physician. Now I'm gonna scroll down to a different document. And. This statement here. So. It. It implies that if the, if the person conducting the restraint is aware of medical conditions that. Through the history of knowing the child. If there's, you know. You know, bronchitis, like obesity necessarily isn't documented by a physician. To the school. So if it, but if the staff member knows. Then. That would be a prohibition. I don't know if you need to run this by somebody, Jeff, but.
Uh, Jim, you were going back and forth.
Yes, it's J, the two J K A As, there's the Medfield version and the M A S C version. Okay, you've got the timeout language in here already, so that's good. There must be, student must be continuously observed by a staff member, that's. That's good. So that's the only recommendation I have for this. Is that one change, be, because it may, you know, there, there may be physical conditions the staff members are aware of that the. Uh, next up is J K D, student suspension, and here I'm just simply recommending we take this out because it's covered under J I C. But it's something we already covered. The I C we covered in the previous meeting. This does not take into the chapter two twenty-two changes.
Everyone loves somebody.
Huh?
Said that everyone loves so much.
Yeah. It was a reaction to a very specific program problem. In a lot of urban schools, uh, same thing with J K E. It's almost impossible to expel a student now.
That was interesting, I don't like this on high school.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, student welfare, this is the policy that covers the requirements as mandated reporters under chat, uh, dot one nineteen fifty-one A. Um, it also talks about, um, sorry, we need to go to the second version of this. For one very specific reason. State Fire Marshal didn't like the policy language on fire drills and reporting. So that's where the second version came from. So, any incident of a fire, whether or not the custodian was able to put it out, has to be reported to the fire department. And that's now a state fire marshal requirement. Even if the fire department had became. We, um, generically, under safety on the playground and playing field, we. Generically put in that, under the first kind of bullet there, periodic inspection. Um, of the, of the school's playground and play fields by the principal of the school and others, as may deemed appropriate, we generically put principal. If, if it should be somebody else. I don't know whether he's, you know, head custodian or, you know, whether the district has a facilities maintenance person that does this. We ju, like I said, we generically put principal, but. It's your policy manual, so you can make it be. Okay. Sounds good. Uh, student insurance program, um, you don't really need this policy per se, because. I mean, all students are supposed to have primary healthcare anyway. Um, and this is a, it's a, it's a secondary insurance anyway, but. A lot of districts, they, they, they get the brochures, they hand them out when student athletes sign up for stuff and. But. It's kind of like an outdated. Uh, J L C. Health services and requirements, and. All right, so this is the Medfield one. School information handbook first gave. I think they're basically the same thing, other than we didn't bold. The paragraphs and we updated parent to parent guardians in our document, but. This is like here, it says approval of parents, it says parents are guardians. And none of this is bolded. National medication. I don't know if the parent can operate, uh, ambulance may be calling, special courage. And same thing here, translation, yeah, that's, that's really, yeah. Yeah, yeah. So that's really the difference between the two documents, it's just the housekeeping stuff. Oh, the cross references too. Uh, physical examinations of students, J L C A. The Medfield one says examine once each school year for screening and sight or hearing and for other physical problems is provided by laws. By law, I should laws. Um, every student will be given a physical examination four times. The M A S C one. Um, adds the B M I component as a, every student will be examined for screening and sight, hearing and B M I and for other physical problems. It also has the recommendation at the bottom of the page from, uh, the Department of Health. Um, vision screening in grades one through five, once between six and eight, or once between nine and twelve, hearing screenings one through three, so forth, so B M I and grades one, four, seven and ten. Since they're, those three tests are specifically required, that's why we list all three of them in the first paragraph.
Let's see, I need to work close, I, I keep looking and see. I might have one question on the J L C A.
Yep.
On the version that.
Does it say B M I in the first line?
Yes, that's yours.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the, the school nurse will make a monthly report, the superintendent, the number of students examined.
They never, yep. Does that not happen?
No, we don't do that every month.
But you just said that too.
Sure, I know, they don't, they don't do it every month.
When do you, well, you want to say a regular report?
Yeah, regular report.
I don't know, I don't know where monthly came from, I, I don't think it's in the regs. Yeah, so, okay.
Uh, Jim, I, I'll take your opinion on it, I'm just looking at. We want to try to do, do we think we have, trying to get through this.
We are thirty pages away. J L C B. Trying to think, is there anything in the reads, ministry medications, health. A T guides, the records, and then. Um, I'm willing to try.
Yeah, I would say, we've done okay picking up mid, mid cycle, um, I want to, I'd rather spend a couple minutes looking at, uh.
Okay.
Do an approval of the minutes into.
Yep, okay. Let me just save this, so we'll start again on J L C B.
And then, um.
And then kick into, so we can add these. These files to the next agenda and then K and L. I would list both K and L on the agenda, simply because L is very short. Um, and if we're ten minutes away and we finish K. There's no reason not to do L, because it's only about five pages. K and L. Don't, don't you already have any? I'll send them again.
Okay, one, so, 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 uh, yeah, um, so what we've gone through and. I don't think the, the revisions you've made so far on J have been made until.
Until you've completed the section, right, I'd rather do.
So that the, um, the first part with the A and B, you'll, you'll send those to us.
Yes.
Right, um, if we're gonna want to get that. I think, um, and then under, we can do it offline, maybe call up the spreadsheet and start looking at the drumbeat to get. Some of these reviews back into our school, that is. That, that was one thing. Um, we do have an outstanding calendar block.
The second, February second?
February second. In the morning, is that still good for everybody?
Good for me.
Right, nine thirty.
Oh, it's nine thirty?
Yes.
Thirty, yes.
Is there, is there a reason, you know, the board director made it, you know, yes, there's a reason. Uh, yeah, that's, we keep that nine thirty eleven, I think you're saying we should probably get to. Getting out, um, do we want to pull up? Like, I, I like what we did before, um, just looking at what, pulling up calendars to, um, so, so we just don't have to. And how far, Jim, how, how, you know, how many?
Well, we put, we, we kind of knocked off a big piece of the stuff that was outstanding. That's usually the last meeting is you have to go back and look at all the policies you put on hold.
Yeah.
Um, and we just took care of a bunch of that today, so just, there are some in here in J that. If we can come back with those in two weeks. And catch up on those. And then finish out J, go to, I, I would say probably try to get one more on the calendar, just to be on, because it's easier to do now than two weeks from now. Um, I know it's the Friday before school vacation week, but the sixteenth, I don't know if people are gonna be peeling off early.
I can do that day, but you guys want. Do you have a, do you? And then.
Huh?
If you want to do it without me, that's fine. Um, why don't we put a placeholder now?
Right.
Um, so Emily, are you right on the sixteen, say from?
Yep.
Nine to eleven?
Yep, that works.
And that should be enough.
Yeah, I think, I think that's where at the stage where, um, we, we're starting, you know, we have a good backlog and then we need to start getting them back into our meetings, but that, that's okay. Yeah, I think, I think that's where at the stage where, um, we, we're starting, you know, we have a good backlog and then we need to start getting them back in order of meetings, but that, that's okay. Okay, so we can do that. And I think, uh, there's anything else there? So this is, I'm, 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 today. Um, otherwise, I think it's just to approve the minutes and, uh, which they, they were in the packet. Um, so I, I guess I'll put, place a motion to approve the minutes for the November third, two thousand twenty three Policy Subcommittee.
Well moved.
Okay, all in favor, Tim Knight, yes?
Leo Brown, yes.
Okay. And, um, otherwise, I think, uh, appreciate the time. I think we can, uh, close this out, so, uh, make a motion to close the meeting tonight. Yes.
Uh, second that, Leo Brown, yes.
Okay, ten fifteen six. Okay, great. Uh, thanks very much. Um, thank you so much. Are you?
Thanks, everybody. Have a great weekend.